Okay, the minutes will stand as presented. Yeah, let's get a motion to amend.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't have a public agreement. All right, let's go down to Peggy with the budget.
Okay, in your packets you'll have information about our budget hearing. That's kind of year again. On Monday, June the 10th, we'll have a public hearing here at City Hall at 10:00 a.m. And then Tuesday, the 11th, we'll be considering the budget for approval. The summary is there with your sheet showing each fund and the anticipated revenues and expenditures, the proposed budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 2020. That does not seem possible, but anyway, is 11,391,459. That's up a couple hundred thousand from last year, but if you would take some of the grants that we are working on, take that out of the equation, it would actually be less than last year's. So that will be coming up in June. So if you have any questions, let me know. Well, like I said, when you come to the meeting, it's open to everyone here and to the public. The other thing that I, the other report that I handed you is, the board had mentioned several times to me and then Burley in particular has talked about it a lot with me since he came into office about starting to consider having reserves. We've talked about it for a few years and just haven't really been able to do it. So what I did was I took your, it's the same report that you got at the end of April, and I just reworked it a little bit. And if you look at last month's report versus this one, the bottom line stays the same. Nothing changes, except that we put a new line in there that says reserve funds. And we either took money out of like the savings account or from the checking account. For example, there in the general fund column, we had $32,812 in like a savings account. We would just move that up to this reserve line. Water sewer had over a million dollars in their checkbook, so we moved $500,000 down to this reserve line. Now, that's just a proposal. It's just a suggestion. I'm not asking for us to actually go in and restrict those monies to where they can't be used. Just move them down to a line item to see if maybe over the next six months or so, if we can operate off of this top line and be able to, over a period of the next 12 months, see if we can maintain it. We may not be able to. We may, as expenditures come in and if revenues don't pan out like we think, we might have to rearrange these things. But since you all had suggested that we start doing that, we thought this might be a beginning step to just see where it falls. We can adjust this at any given time. It's totally fluid, but that restricts, I'm restricting myself, I'll put it like that, without you guys literally doing a resolution to restrict the monies. I'm just restricting myself in that. These monies are set down here in this line item, and the only way we'll move them is if I go talk to Burley and Burley talks to you all and say, yes, let's, obviously that's not working, let's move some money back up into the operating. At the very, very bottom, I just put some ideas in there looking at each fund, what we might think about having eventually in reserves, you know?
The goal is a number out here.
Yeah.
Yep.
And for example, Carl Slate and I were talking, like in his sanitation fund, if we could get 250,000 sitting back in a reserve account, and say a year or two down the line here, he needs a new trash truck, maybe we, the budget will only allow us 100,000 and the truck actually costs 200, we could literally borrow from ourselves and pay back into that reserve fund, maybe even with interest, rather than going out to a lending institution and paying them interest. So I just see it down the road as being a real positive for the city to be able to finance our own projects. But this is just a proposal, it's just a suggestion, nothing legally binding on it, it's just a line item for now. And then totally open to comment as to whether you think this is a good idea or what you all think.
Oh, I think it's excellent.
We've actually, from the different departments, we've shifted about $700,000 down, so it's a start, you know? And it'll take a while to get to that 3.3, but I think it's a goal that we could work on and got to start somewhere.
Yeah, you bet. This is something that the auditors have actually recommended about every year to make amends to do this. They recommend it starting with at least a three-month reserve. What are these reserves? Are they three months, six months, a year?
That's gonna be my question, yeah.
No, it's Peggy looking at it going, hmm, well, if we put 1.5 in electric, then we would have at least three months of utility bills. You know, water fund might be, we don't have that big, maybe a million dollars to just have to do. Totally just Peggy's calculations on there, so totally open to interpretation, up or down, you know?
By the time we figure our payroll and our pension payments and electric payment, you know, it sounds like a lot of money to have a million and a half reserve in electric, but you know, looking at that, that pays three months electric bills.
Yeah, that's all it does.
It's self-insured policy is what it is, that's what it amounts to.
Well, and in case of a storm, I mean, a million and a half, yeah, it's a lot of money, but we have another storm come through and you take out a bunch of lines, transformers and poles, and we have to have outside help contract come in and help get those back up and going, that million and a half goes quick.
And that's happened twice.
Yeah.
And the two governmental funds there, those are tax-supported funds, so I was, I just looked at that, and I do like your idea of the three months, and you might need to go back and look at those figures, so that you have something to base it off of. It shouldn't probably be as much as your utility funds, you're not going to see a million dollars sitting in parks. But I do think we, going back, and I'll have the auditors maybe look at that when they come in the fall and say, could you give me some more figures that might be a little more accurate?
Yeah, I think it would be good, you know? When we have the public looking at our budget, you know, they might look at this and say, you know, you guys have a fee in an act and reserve, but if we could say, you know, look, that just carries us through three months.
Right.
And, you know, it's not a large math drive.
No, it's, it is amazing how much money does come through and how much actually goes out and how quickly it can go out, so. But I did think that that, I'm like, it's a start, a starting place.
Yeah, you bet. I think it's a real positive direction for us.
And just leave it fluid for now, you know, we may down the road want to be more restrictive, but I think for now, let's maybe just do this scenario and see how it goes.
Yeah, I visited with Peggy before all of this and kind of gave her my thoughts. I didn't have, I just gave her my thoughts and I said, this is what I'd like to do. Peggy's worked hard to put these numbers together and I'm pleased with what Peggy's done with it. She's come up with numbers that I'm happy with and I think we can all work with them. It's a goal for us, you know? Anyway, I think we'll get there.
You bet.
Suzanne?
All right, first on the list is an ordinance, a bill number for reviewing the animal section in our code. So it's bill number 190507, and in our first reading, it says, "An ordinance repealing City of Ava, Missouri Code of Ordinance, Chapter 10 of Animals," and replacing it with the new Chapter 10 Animals. This is based off of a legal review with our coding company, and also had several suggestions about making our vicious dog ordinance a little stronger.
Actually, I'm not looking to pass it by no means tonight, but of course, on an ordinance, we have to have two readings, and you know, if you want to make a motion for the, you know, the first reading and then there will be some changes. There's already been some changes made.
Do we need to wait on the reading or do we need to?
They can go ahead and do the first reading, I think.
That's what I regret the man, is a motion for the first reading and then we'll, Mike, you know, we'll get it the way we want it and then at the next meeting, we'll have a second reading on it and get the changes in it, and that way, and there's already been some questions brought up, so basically, I entertain a motion for the first reading on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion for the first reading.
And it's got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, we'll bring this back to the next meeting.
Okay, and then Resolution number 20190504. Just a second. That is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest an agreement with actionality to list the Rawlings Building for sale.
And I'm gonna clarify this a little further. This is the brick building only, and we don't down any of that tail on there. It's not, nothing to do with the warehouse out back, it's just the brick building only.
Could we table that, Mayor, later?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Motion to table that till later in the meeting?
I'll make a motion, Peggy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I want to go to the next one.
Next one is Resolution 20190505, and that is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest the contract agreement between Pittson Sun Excavating for the purpose of cutting hay off of city property in exchange for excavation work.
I'll make a motion to approve that, Ms. Lucian.
Second?
I'll say it.
Any questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution is 20190506, a resolution authorizing and approving the city's entering into an agreement to pay the Ava Area Chamber of Commerce services and expenses for promoting the economic development of the city and surrounding areas and directing the mayor to execute the agreement.
This number is stayed the same, same amount of money as we did last year, so do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next reading is Resolution 20190507, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest a renewal of lease agreement known as the Fairground Lease, and also brought to my attention is a change in the back on the whole harmless, because I didn't put the right date in there.
I'll make that motion. Second? Any further discussion on that? These amounts, the dollar wise, they've all stayed the same, so we have a second there. Do we have any further discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 20190508 is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest an addendum and extension to contract agreement with the Senior Age Area Agency on Aging for the Use of Community Center.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
I'll second.
Any further discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least is a resolution 20190509, and this resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest the contract agreement for JV construction to construct and pour 800 foot by 20 foot concrete apron and two side pads that are four foot by 12 foot for both entry doors for the electric department shed.
Motion to approve?
Just move.
I'll say it.
With one correction on a word.
A word?
One word.
Which word is that?
It is in Section 3, and it says due to, which should be inclement weather.
Okay. Okay, I forgot where we're standing. Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the meeting. Does any alderman have any comments or anything before I get started? This is kind of an update. We went back, Suzanne and myself and Lance Stillen went back to, we went to the SCOTC, the TAC meeting over there, and it's a good thing we did, because we were going to lose the four projects that we had put in for. Originally, we put in for, let's see, we put in for the roundabout to make it look like a roundabout, and safety issue at Five and Y and Dogwood Hill and the shoulders on Five Highway from A Highway to Gainesburg. But anyway, we got over there and the guy from West Plains, he wanted all, for these four, round figures, he wanted all 40 million dollars to go to How County on the extension from How, or from West Plains to there, which the 40 million was guesstimated that we went from West Plains to Branfield as far as the 40 millions, but 40 million would have tuck him, but.
Was that his four lane?
Yeah. They've got a turning lanes now, which it sounds like it does the job, but anyway, he wanted all 40, round figures there, again, all 40 million of it down there, and needless to say, we, and I was thankful for the county to be there and then us, but anyway, we got it. Actually, we got two of the items moved up a little bit on the first page that we had, and that was the roundabout and the safety issue out on Y Highway. We got those moved up a little bit, but we got all four projects put back on the list, or if we hadn't been there, they'd have been gone, so. And there again, I was thankful for the county showing up and actually, Ozark County helped us out also, so I was thankful for Ozark County also. Have you got a list of lifeguards there?
Yeah, we did.
And we need, we need an approval on that. I want to break that down into two different motions, because Bridget is on one of them. I would like to go, what I, if everybody's all right with the lifeguards. I'd like to, there you go.
Well, I had them, because I've read them all.
He's got a niece on that list.
Yes, I was going to tell you, my niece is on that list, we listed while I saw them. Okay? All right. Let's, anyway, let's go with the lifeguards first, and if you just had a chance to look over them, and these were all recommended by Sherry, so I entertain a motion to accept the list of lifeguards that Sherry has presented to us.
So you'll have to stay.
There we are. You go, I'll make a motion then.
Okay, we have a second.
We have a second here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one abstaining.
I abstain, yeah.
I've got on the non-certified, because Bridget's on there, and we'll do it the same way, just a motion to approve the non-certified that Sherry has recommended. Do we have a motion for that, the non-certified?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain.
One abstaining, okay. So that takes care of the lifeguard and the non-certified.
Give me more nieces or nephews on there, I'm not giving them to anybody.
We were going to have bids for the lower park in the 23rd, May the 23rd, but we changed that to until May the 30th, that we'll have the bid opening at 3:00 on May the 30th. And the reason why is because of the flooding down there, and we're trying to get the bathrooms moved to a higher elevation, and then we're going to have one change on it anyway. It showed water fountains out front, and we really don't need them, because if we get them in that location of 50 feet away from it, there's a water fountain already there, so we're going to have that. That'll be an optional, an option on the bid, so basically, we're taking it off, and that'll save a little bit of money, so. Okay, any questions on that? No change in that until the 30th, at 3:00 we'll have a bid opening. And it's going to take a little bit, a few more weeks before we find out from the survey whether we can put it in that location, get it out of the floodplains. Okay, we visited again with Trek, you know, we come up with a number, 2.1 million over a four-year period or five-year period, I can't remember, four or five-year period, and we can't, I mean, financially, we can't, we can't even think about doing that, but they come back down and we visited with them again, and they come up with, just, we talked to Jeff Kohler and we thought, what is the most important part that we need mapped out? And Jeff felt like it was the service system. So anyway, we visited a little bit with him about that, and he just, they shot us a number of $50,000 out there, and anyway, with some, we've got some other projects, and I'll talk about a little bit later, that we're going to have to do this year or next year, and on this $50,000 figure, I would feel more comfortable with, let's just put this off for a year or two, and there is a mapping that's going to take place in Marshville within the next year, and we may be able to talk to them and visit, you know, and get a better idea of what would better serve our community, and so I would recommend us just, let's just forget about this mapping until we can look into it in the future and have a little better understanding of what our community needs and what we can, we can stay up with, okay? And I got a shock last week with an ISO building code grading. It's a rating that, and it's my understanding, that's down there for four years, and Randolph Finkel drove down. Anyway, we, Suzanne and I spent about two hours with him, and this was something that caught me off-guard, but anyhow, I don't know yet, or we don't know yet, how the rating went, but I feel pretty comfortable that we've done all right with it, so it's just we'll wait and see how we come up on that, you know, come out on it, but I think we're done, we'll be just fine with it, so. But it wasn't, it wasn't as bad as I expected it to be. I was, anyway, I'm comfortable with, I think it'll be just fine, so. And this is just a follow-up, our cleanup went good, and there's still a little bit of brush up, and these storms won't leave us alone, and there's brush, still have brush cleanup, and we will probably up into the summer, but anyway, the brush crew, they are following up on that, and each week, we get more calls on it, but we'll, we'll just keep cleaning until we get it all taken care of. And this wastewater treatment, this is what a treatment plant, the filters on it, that was one of the things that, you know, we're going to have to look at, and it's a, it's a huge expense, and I don't know if, nobody's probably, none of the aldermen are probably familiar with this, but I went, and I was, and I went down to the treatment plant, and I thought, what kind of filter would cost 250,000 dollars? So anyway, I went down, and there's, 250,000 is a round figure that replaced two, we had three. So anyway, that's something that we're going to have to look at soon. They're, they say these filters will last about 25 to 30 years, where our plant was built in 1989, which is 30 years. So they're working fine now, and, but, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to probably do a couple of them either this year or next year, and then put one of them off, and, but that was one of the things I was referring to, that, you know, we need to put our money there instead of a GS mapping, you know? I don't know if we can, we're thinking about maybe tackling part of it this year, but that filtering system, you know, I think of it like it's a swimming pool, you know, a big tank with sand in it. Well, this is basically the same thing, but it's big, long concrete vats that's got perforated pipes in the bottom and then sand on top of it, and this sewage goes through the sand, and when it comes out the other side, it's, it's pretty remarkable how clean it is, and then it goes from there, goes through some ultrabobite light, two different banks of them, and then it goes from there into the stream, so it's quite a process, and I would recommend looking at it, and then you better understand, when I've, or talk to the people, they ask me, why are our sewer rates so high? Well, you know, our water, we just pump it out of the ground and it runs into our house. They drink it or use it, but I never give it much thought until I went down there, what the process is that this sewage goes through to treat it and then put it back out in the stream, so as an alderman, I would really recommend going down and seeing what kind of a process, and that way, we can better answer that question when we're out in the public, why does it cost us this much for our sewage? And it's, it's quite a process that it goes through, and then watch out, when it goes in and then when it comes out, what it looks like, and it's, it goes back into the stream, and it's ready, when it's processed, it's ready to go back into the stream, so, but anyway.
One of the reasons why it is so expensive is because it is what they call a tri-issuary system, there's three different processes, because it's going into Prairie Creek, which is a losing stream, and that's why there's all those extra requirements from DNR, is if it's different, if it's not going into a losing stream, this goes into a losing stream, and so there's a lot of extra.
How do we tell when those filters are no longer, I mean, how do we tell when they have to be replaced? Do they test the water coming out?
Yes, I think there's testing.
There's a periodic test that, they pull a sample out and then they take it to Springfield, I'm assuming Springfield, and anyway.
So the water quality is to the point, we're going to have to start thinking about replacing some filters?
It's, yeah.
It's doing its job.
They serve their purpose.
Right. It is doing its job.
It's doing its job.
But there's a lot to be expected.
So if one of those goes down, how long can we, can we maintain with one, two of those? Can we maintain them long enough to get that over?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And there's always the option, and this is what we do with, like, when there's a, like the eight and a half inches rain or whatever, when there's more than we can process, it's diverted over into the lefin, and then when we get slack time, we pump that back and then, yes, we process the fin and then put it back in the stream, so if we have to, we can divert water over to the legade if one of these go down. But it's, it's a big expense that we're going to have to look at, and it's a matter of, do we do it now or do we put it off until next year, but we're going to look at.
Matter of if, it's a matter of when at this point.
So we're going to look at it, aren't we?
Yes.
We're going to look at it and if we can, if we can do it, we'll probably try to tackle it this year.
And that's why, you know, on some of the capital expenditures and especially, there's like zero for this and zero for that. It's because we're trying to funnel it all into the possibility that we might have to do that. And if we don't, then we might be able to move some of it back out. But we're just going to concentrate on that and see what happens.
And we can, we can do two of them cheaper, you know, at one time versus them bringing all their equipment down there and doing one for, say, 125,000.
Yeah.
And then going back, we can do the two and save quite a bit, quite a bit of money. And so that's what we're, that's the reason we're looking at two right now.
And that answers my question. I was going to ask if we could do one, but if we can.
Well, that's not out of the question. That's, that's something we're going to visit with them about. I talked to Stephen today and he came in here and I said, I'd like to talk, you and I, and see what we can do. And maybe we can make arrangements where we can do them both at the same time and make payments or do, pay for one now and maybe put a, the other one over on a different fiscal year, depending on what time of the year we had it done. So we, we are kind of negotiating to see what we can do. So. Any more questions on that? It's, I, I would recommend if you get time, it's, it's interesting to go down and look at it. So. And I think I mentioned a little bit about DNR coming down and they took samples of the water. And anyway, there was a whole list of stuff. I can announce some of the stuff that they tested for. But the bottom line is our drinking water tested out good. And we're, we're good on that. And down to, I've got guns down here for PD. And he's not. Do you want to, do you want to talk about that?
Can we do that in closed at the time?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. I want to get some more information on it. I don't have that information.
Sure.
We don't have wayfinding, don't you guess?
Uh, well, I skipped wayfinding, I'm sorry. Uh, Michael Wake was on vacation last week and he's over the sign department at West Plains. But we did send the information to him and then he sent the information to Jeff City. So we're waiting on Jeff City. As soon as they get back and say it's okay, we'll, we'll get the signs and we'll get them, we'll get them done. So I think that's all of that. We need a, we need a motion to go into closed. What about this, this one here? Were we talking about that in closed or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. A motion to go into closed?
That's a next motion.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.